One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. We do have everybody here.
Uh, yep. Hang on one second.
I'm checking. It's on. I can see it.
Okay.
It's on.
I can't. Let's see the screen now. Oh, there we go. Okay.
All right, then, uh, I will call the meeting of the North Syracuse Board of Education to order and, uh, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to begin with a moment of silence for the following. Barbara DeRenz, Rita, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Holly DeSantis, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District, and Michael Burdick, a retired employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Okay, we'll begin with a presentation for the CNS Recognition School Award. So, Mr. Bowles, I believe you are going to take us through that?
Yes. So, uh, one of the things I wanted to start with is that, um, New York State has a lot of things with accountability and due to our state testing and, uh, different things with ESSA. Um, so we're measured in several different areas. So CNS has been recognized as a recognition school. So what is a recognition school? Uh, schools that have high academic achievement, strong progress, that also perform acceptably for all subgroups for which they are accountable. There are 582 schools in New York who are identified this spring as recognition schools. Of that 582, 212 are high schools. How did CNS perform? The performance is based on scores in math, ELA, science, and the social studies Regents exams. So when Donna Marie does her accountability, which we are looking to have her come do, um, in June, uh, the performance index was 195 out of 200. So they scale it on a scale of, uh, one through four. So we were at the high end at level four. Our graduation rate, percentage of students who graduate from a cohort, that cohort starts, once students enter ninth grade, the clock starts ticking. So, um, of all of our students, 91% were graduating within four years, which also gave us a level four on the state accountability. Then there's a lot of, a lot of other subgroups at the high school level where they look at career and civic readiness, AP, uh, courses offered, um, advanced Regents, uh, CTE diplomas, and SEAL of BYE and triliteracy. And I want to emphasize the triliteracy because we had a student last year not only have, uh, qualified for biliteracy, but had a, a, a third language. So that's why we changed the slide to triliteracy, and we received as a high school a level four. Another subgroup that they look at for districts are chronic absenteeism. So our ser- uh, the high school is at a level two. You must be above a level one. And we were, um, 11 students between a level two to be in a level three. So when you're talking about above 1,900 students, um, that's, that's still pretty good. And, uh, they have established a committee, and that's one of their goals, that they're working on chronic absenteeism because they want to move at minimum to a level three next year. So with all of those subgroups and things that are being looked at, it qualified us as a recognition school. And I believe, uh, a few weeks ago, we did submit, I think Mrs. Gibson submitted to the board that the high school was also within the top 25 in central New York, um, as far as schools and how they're doing. And we are, there are only five high schools in the region, in the OCMBOSEs, that were listed as recognition schools. So Baldenville, JD, Marcellus, West Jenny, and West Hill. I'm sorry, there's six, and FM. So, uh, if you want to compare us to those schools, that's pretty good company. So, um, that, that concludes, but I want to share some good news because, uh, people are working hard throughout the district, and it's nice when, um, it pays off and we are getting, uh, some recognition and the state is recognizing, uh, them for their work. Any questions?
Questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you. Now that, that's very nice. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have a budget presentation. Uh, Mr. Keegan's gonna take that. I think everybody received the, uh, summary that came out just this budget subcommittee. I, I thank Marizio, Vice President Marizio, for coming up with the idea, making sure that the board did see that, because I know in the past, when I was not on the Budget Committee, it really helped a lot to see a summary. Uh, I didn't see them in the past, so to really get an idea of the nuts and bolts at the end of the day as to what is in that budget. So thank you, um, and thank you, Dan and Don, Jason, for putting that together, and Chris, whoever did that all, because that was a nice, uh, concise summary of where we've been. So go ahead, Mr. Keegan. Thank you.
I just want to know, does Don want questions as we go through, or does he want them at the end?
Whatever the board is comfortable with, um, would be fine.
Okay.
Um, I, if, if, uh, the only caveat I'll say is if I've got a, a good slide that answers your question coming up, if you're okay, I'll say, I've got a slide on that. Uh, I'll get to it if that's okay.
Well, I've looked at this, these slides twice, so I kind of know.
Okay, yeah, good. Feel free. And, um, can folks hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I think before we, I think before we jump into the slideshow, I think it's really important that we, we, um, we establish some context, uh, for which, uh, this budget was put together in, in, uh, in some very unique times. And what better way to do that than to look at some headlines? And so, um, as you guys all know, we're in the midst of a global pandemic. New York State has more cases of coronavirus than any other country. And it's had, has had dire economic implications with, uh, over 30 million, uh, jobless claims filed, uh, since March. In New York State, um, this is the largest budget crisis we've had in a decade. The state controller, Controller Tom DiNapoli, is saying that our current $6 billion deficit, which is a huge number, uh, will grow to $10 to $13 billion. So these are, these are difficult times, and they certainly have weighed heavily on the district as we've worked, uh, to put this budget together. And so what does it mean to our students? Our, our students are home. Uh, they're home and, uh, uh, working, uh, online with the teachers and our teachers and teaching assistants. And, and others have done a tremendous amount of work to support students in this new environment. Our seniors, as we all know, it's, it's kind of tugs at the heartstrings. They've, they've missed their, uh, one of the most exciting times in their, their senior year, the second half of their senior year. But our, our CNS, uh, team has done an amazing job to stay connected with these kids and to recognize them. And this is just one example. They travel to every single senior's home and put a sign on their lawn and, and interacted with these kids and, and really made them feel special. And, um, and that's just a simple example. Our community, um, our community is, uh, is really struggling. And, um, we are running 10 feeding sites. As of today, we've distributed over 73,000 meals. And, and if you travel to the sites, you see teachers, teaching assistants, food service workers, bus drivers, and attendants all pulling together. This is, this is the Allen Road site. Um, and, uh, and if you remember, we've had some pretty cold, cold mornings. These folks have been out there, uh, serving meals. So I think that gives a little bit of context, uh, to the budget presentation, uh, the times that we're in. And I want to walk you through the, through the agenda quickly. Uh, we're going to talk about our revenues. Uh, the biggest component being state aid, and the biggest component of that being foundation aid. And we'll talk about, talk about those. Our tax levy and the tax cap calculation. We're going to look at our proposed expenditures. And unfortunately, we're going to look at some reductions required to balance the budget. We're going to look at proposed additions. Um, and we've got, uh, our usual vehicle, uh, bonding proposition. We'll look at the financial condition of the district via our fund balance and reserves, and then we'll talk about the vote and the election. Starting with revenues, I always like to, uh, start, uh, we always like to start by just putting a little, a few assumptions out there. Um, and I think it's very important to note that this budget is based on the final New York State budget that was approved by the legislature. So the state aid included, included in here is based on that final budget. However, the governor has told us that our state aid is subject to change quarterly based on how are the state's actual revenues come in. And so we're, we're on pins and needles, uh, you know, waiting to see how that process develops. Uh, but that's an important thing to keep, keep in mind, and we've got a chart in here that kind of talks a little bit about that. We'll talk about that. I'm going to talk about the building aid, um, briefly, um, in another slide. I'll talk about the pandemic adjustment and the CARES Restoration Aid that we received. Um, we've got our usual calculation of the property tax, uh, levy. And I, I just want to remember this, the only, or remind you, this is the only place it's mentioned in the presentation. But we still are benefiting from the Smart Schools Bond Act. And the Smart Schools Bond Act is what funded all of those Chromebooks and all the technology that's enabling our, our, uh, instruction remotely. And so, uh, it's, I think, important to mention that, uh, we still have a little bit of money in there, but it will not affect our general fund budget in any way. So our revenue budget is $172,567,744. And I think, you know, as we, as we often talk about, 95%, almost 95% of our revenues come from state aid and the tax levy. They are the, they are the driving forces. State aid from a state that's in a difficult financial situation, a tax levy that, that's calculated, uh, in accordance with the cap. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go into detail on the state aid and the tax levy, but I want to, I want to hit a few of these lines. One of the, the charges that we, we talked with our Budget Committee about was we, we, we want to make sure that we, we get the most out of all of our revenues and that we don't underestimate those because of the implications they'd have on, um, on cuts. So we really squeezed pilots and sales tax and interest. We've increased the appropriation of our fund balance that we're going to use to support our budget. So what does that mean? We're spending $4 million of the district's savings to support this budget. In addition, we're using, um, a million dollar, a million dollars of our general reserve to support this budget. We want to make sure that we're pulling out all the stops, uh, to ensure, uh, that we have, uh, the right revenues, uh, to support this budget. I'll go into more details again on the, on the building aid and the tax levy when I talk about the, the state aid, which is this next slide. I think the big takeaway from this slide is, is, as usual, foundation aid is the number one component. It's the biggest component of our state aid, and it's actually going down a little bit, going down by $880. The next component is excess cost aid. An excess cost aid is an expense-driven aid. And I want to define expense-driven for you. Expense-driven aids are aids that you get for spending money. You, it directly correlates the amount of money you spend. Excess cost aid supports our special ed population. What drives special ed spending is the individual educational, uh, education plan that our, uh, that our students have. You can see, we had a pretty substantial increase in, uh, spending on special, uh, our special needs population. That's about $1.4 million. We also had increases in transportation, uh, a lot related to special ed, um, and, uh, and our BOSEs, um, aid. We, 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 time and time again, have looked to BOSEs to provide programs for our students. And, uh, we spent more money with BOSEs this year than we ever have, and, uh, we got more aid in doing so. The pandemic adjustment, while many of you remember the gap elimination adjustment, this is the same, the same type of thing. The pandemic adjustment is that New York State came to the realization that it could not fund all of the aid that, that was due to schools. Uh, and so they did two things. They suspended any increases in foundation aid, and they cut aid by $1.4 million. Thankfully, that number was, that amount was offset by the federal CARES Restoration Aid. And so these two aids offset each other. Um, and, uh, and so our total spending, uh, our, I'm sorry, our total aid for the 2020, 21 school year is $71.3 million, about a $2.1 million increase or 3.06%. Again, most of that increase is an expense-driven aid. A little redundant here, but I just want to emphasize again, no increase in foundation aid. We did anticipate a drop-off in building aid. Um, and that was, uh, that was due to the fact that we had paid off, um, uh, uh, our debt associated with other projects. The timing is perfect as we begin the Bear Road renovation and as we complete the roof projects that are underway. Again, uh, 3.06% or $2.1 million increase in state aid. I know the board members are, have developed a, a, a good level of expertise in foundation aid, the largest component of our state aid. But for those folks listening from home, I want to reemphasize that in 2007, the state's method for allocating resources to school districts changed. They adopted this, uh, this new aid called foundation aid. And the formula was, was very thoughtful. It distributes funds to schools based on the cost of providing a sound, basic education. And that cost is adjusted, uh, based on regional costs. Unfortunately, the aid that has been committed, um, to schools, um, has not been delivered. And, um, this next chart shows that the North Syracuse Central School District has lost over $178 million in foundation aid, aid that should have been paid. This year, we're going to be $13.1 million short. And that's because the state doesn't have the money to fully fund the program. And, and that's, that's really unfortunate. What makes it maybe even more difficult is the inequity of it. Uh, the, the aid that is being distributed is not being distributed equitably. And you would think that school districts with a lower wealth would receive a higher percentage of their aid. If you can't give me 100% or give us 100%, you'd think you'd at least distribute what you have based on the wealth of the districts. And so let me explain this chart to you. This chart shows data for 15 school districts that are large suburban school districts like North Syracuse that have wealth ratios, combined wealth ratios of between 0.6 and less than 1. If you have a 1 as a combined wealth ratio, you're the average wealth in New York State. Our combined wealth ratio is a 0.625. Um, as you can see, these are all the wealth ratios for the districts listed, um, that are in these top, in these 15 districts that are comparable to North Syracuse. Our percentage of aid, we're receiving 82.1% of our foundation aid. And as you can see, if, if it correlated, the bars would be moving with the line as opposed to jumping all over the place here. Um, and so, uh, one of our neighbors, they received 90.4% of their aid. If we received 90.4% of our aid, we'd have $4.7 million more aid, and we would not have any of the cuts that we're about to take you through tonight. Um, and that, that's very frustrating. So that's, that's foundation aid. And, um, and I think that's a challenge, uh, for the future. We're going to have to really continue to work on convincing New York to distribute this aid more equitably. Just one more picture of the dedicated people that have been feeding our community, teachers and food service workers, um, working diligently, uh, on this very important work. Let's shift to the tax cap and talk a little bit about the tax levy for, for next year. Our tax levy for next year, um, is calculated using the mandated, the, the legislated, uh, formula for how a tax levy should be calculated. And we have a levy of $92,544,955. At the tax levy limit, the maximum amount we can levy with a simple majority vote, or that, that levy went up by $2.3 million or 2.59%. For a $100,000 home, a home with a full value of $100,000, that's a $61 increase for four star. How does that, how does that work among the three towns in, in our, in our district? So we have three towns, Cicero, Clay, and Salina. Cicero and Salina are full-value towns. They aspire to have their assessed value equal the full value of the property. And they're doing a pretty good job with that. The town of Clay is not a full-value town. About half the towns in New York State don't assess at full value. So the town of Clay has a partial value, and their $100,000 home in the town of Clay is assessed at $4,000. And that impacts the tax rate. So the tax rate, the projected tax rate for the town of Cicero and the town of Salina is $24.21. The town of Clay, their tax rate per thousand is $605.42. But regardless of which town you live in, your estimated school tax for a $100,000 home will be $2,421, or again, $61, or $5.08 a month, uh, increase for four star.
I wanted to make, can I, I, this is where I want to make a comment, is that this is estimated, um, projected. Let's use the word projected, um, because we do not set the tax rate. Um, and the taxpayers need to know that later tonight, we will be voting on the total sum of, uh, the school budget. We do not, um, these are just estimations because in August, the towns will do their equalization rate, they'll do their reassessments, whatever assessments, and then the school board will, um, take their, whatever they give us and vote on. For instance, last year, um, Salina and Cicero went down a little bit, Clay went up a little bit. But am I correct, Don, that on the long haul, usually, uh, the tax increase is lower than what we project usually?
Yeah, since I've been here, um, this is my ninth budget, and, uh, the rate of 2.59%, for example, we have never seen an increase in my time here, uh, that has, uh, that has been close to the rate we've actually quoted. I mean, we've, we've always come in, we've always come in below that.
Right.
This next chart, uh, this next chart tries to compare our tax rate to the other 22 districts in the BOSEs. Our BOSEs has 23 component districts. The green bar represents North Syracuse Central School District. And the purpose of this chart is not to say we tax too much or we tax too little. It's just to compare us to the other districts in our BOSEs. And, um, our most recent tax rate, uh, was, it was the median, right in the middle. And so, uh, half the districts are, are higher than us and half are lower than us. And that just gives us a point of reference as to where our tax rates fall. So I'd like to move now to talk a little bit about expenditures. Uh, these are, these are the major expense areas, and I just make a few comments on some of the underlying assumptions when we put this budget together. First, on health, uh, expenditures. Uh, we're very lucky. We have a health oversight committee, uh, made up of representatives of, of labor and management. And we work really closely with our, our prescription provider, our, uh, uh, our healthcare administrator, um, and our, um, uh, and our healthcare consultants. And we've had favorable experiences relative to the market. Our self-insured plan has had lower growth rates than the market over the last several years, and we're hopeful that that will continue. Moving on to retirement costs. Our retirement costs for both teachers' retirement system and, and employee retirement system are increasing slightly. Teachers' retirement system going from 8.86 to 9.53. Uh, the employee retirement system going from 15.7 to 16.0. Again, I make a point to say this every year, but we're very fortunate in New York State to have fully funded pension plan. Uh, this does the taxpayers a great service, uh, because those plans are funded. Those assets are invested, um, and, um, and so we're, by, and they're very well managed by actuaries. They look at a, a, a multi-year funding cycle, so they're looking at trends over time. And, and that's a, it's a cycle. We just came off of a period of time where those rates were going down, and now they'll, they'll start to go back up a little bit. But when you compare New York State to other states that have, uh, pension plans that are partially funded, um, it's a very scary, um, situation for those states as to what their long-term costs are really going to be. It's, it's a very difficult situation. We're, we're fortunate to have such well-managed, uh, funds. On the salary side, uh, most of our bargaining unit contracts were, uh, negotiated effective June 30th, 2019. And we've incorporated into this budget those contractual, um, agreements. Uh, we've also included, um, some proposed, uh, budget reductions or eliminations of positions and some new positions that we're creating. Fuel costs, I, I paid the other day a $1.56 for a gallon of gas. I, I, I couldn't even imagine that, that would ever happen again. Uh, so our fleet operating costs are in fact lower due to lower fuel costs. And I've talked about this before. Because of our transportation aid is an expense-driven aid, we get aid based on how much we spend. If we spend less, we get less. And our aid rate is very favorable. It's 78.5% for transportation. So we're only saving, when we save a dollar on the gas price, we save 21.5 cents. But still, it's savings. It's incorporated into the budget. Energy is the same thing, although on the energy side, we've, we've worked on three-year supply agreements. We're covered through the 2021 school year, and we'll be working on another supply agreement after that. So now, and now, and now that you know those underlying assumptions, our expenditure budget equals our revenue budget, $172,567,744. I say this every year, but it's a really important point to make. We spend most of our money on people. We're a people-based business. That's what we do. We put adults in front of children, and it's the, it's the, uh, the most important investment we make. We do spend money. We have a mortgage, so to speak. We have debt service that represents about, uh, $7.2 million or $7.3 million of spending, 4.22% of our budget. We spend money at BOSEs. I've talked about this before. I've, I've got a slide later on that talks about some of the programs. But we, we use BOSEs for technology, for servicing our special ed population, for providing, uh, curriculum and other programs and training. And, you know, they're just a very, a great wealth of resources where the 23 component school districts collaborate, and, and we, we, uh, we work together, and it saves us money, and we get BOSEs aid as a result of that. We're going to buy some equipment next year, and, uh, we're going to, uh, and we're going to do a special project, a security project, enhance the security of one of our schools. On the contractual side, you'll see that those costs are going up. One of the things that we're going to do, I'll just give one illustration of contractual that's hitting us next year. Um, we're going to do a thing called the building condition survey. The state provides us with aid, um, and, and that's, uh, it's a, it's a brand-new expense this year because we only do those once every five years. So we're going to spend between $400,000 and $500,000, fully atable, uh, from New York State, uh, on, on a building condition survey. We also in contractual, we spent a lot of money on supporting, uh, students that are in residential placements. Um, another one that hit us, uh, this year is in our last year's budget, we didn't include the full costs of taking our SRO program up to five full-time SROs. So that budget adjustment is here, but we've had those SROs for the last few years. Um, and so, uh, the SROs are, are, are part and parcel to our, uh, security process, and we've really benefited from that. But again, people-based business, that's why we spend most of our money on people. This is a comparison. Uh, it shows you that, again, uh, we're looking at, uh, 3.48% increase in expenditures, just like revenues, about a $5.8 million increase, um, uh, lower than, uh, industry Lower than industry trends in terms of benefit increases. And obviously these both are impacted by some of the reductions that we're making that we'll talk about in a moment. So before I, before I jump into, I'm going to hit the slides on, on, on the budget reductions that were necessary to balance the budget. I just want to mention as, as an overview, that this was a gut-wrenching process for everybody involved going through the organization and understanding where there were opportunities to make reductions. And, and the people side of this is really important to keep in mind. We, we ended up, at the end of the day, there'll be three layoffs, three people will lose their job. Seven people will go from full-time to part-time. And three of those seven will drop below the half-time and as a result, lose their health benefits. So, you know, that's just to keep the big picture of what the implications are of these cuts in mind. Let's jump in here and talk about elementary education. So defined here, we think of elementary education at North Syracuse as our K-four schools. But technically, elementary is K-six. And so this chart really talks about K-six. And, and looking at our enrollment over the last few years, our enrollment in the elementary edu-, elementary levels has declined. Since two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, it's gone from four thousand five hundred and eighty students down to four thousand two hundred and twenty-six students. That's a decline of seven point seven percent in enrollment. During that same period of time, our elementary staffing increased from two hundred and two teachers to two hundred and seventeen teachers. Or an increase of about seven and a half percent. We took a long, hard look at that with the goal of protecting class sizes and making sure the kids had the, the attention that they needed. And we're proposing a reduction of seven teaching positions. I want to emphasize, class sizes for two thousand and twenty-one remain well below the guidelines and contractual requirements. That projected student-teacher ratios are conducive to meeting the needs of both students and district staff. On the middle school schedule, as you know, we put a lot of work into taking a good, hard look at the middle school schedule. And, and we did a pilot that happened this year. It, it allowed us to offer students a broader offering of academic opportunities. And however, the courses that were added were not required by New York State. And the cost of the program exceeded our financial capacity at this time. And therefore, in light of the budget deficit we were facing, there were nine middle school positions that we created to facilitate the new schedule. That'll be eliminated and we're going to revert back to the same middle school schedule that we had in the eighteen, nineteen school year. I want, I want to make sure you know, we want to make sure you know that state mandated counselors and E and L positions that were hired over the past few years will remain. Secondary enrollment, as you know, in connection with Villia Vision two thousand and twenty, we've worked really hard to expand the offerings for students, particularly at CNS and the junior high, to prepare students for college and careers. Due again to the declining enrollment at the secondary level over the past four years, we're proposing the elimination of seven point six five positions in various tenure areas. But again, student-teacher ratios, class sizes, and caseloads will remain within guidelines and contractual reform. We have really benefited as a, as a district by having teachers on special assignments. It's very powerful to have teachers working together to improve their capabilities. And over the past four years, we've invested heavily in teacher training and support. And, and we've used these instructional coaches. The training has, training and support has been valuable to teachers and it's improved their instruction. And we're proud and appreciative of the important work that teachers on special assignments have achieved. But due to the budget deficit, we need to trim this back a little bit. And so the following teachers on special assignment are going to be going back into the classroom. And that's a co-teaching coach that worked with the new special ed in more inclusive model and, and two literacy coaches. Speaking of special education, over the past four years, the district has significantly increased staffing associated with our special education programs despite a very nominal increase in the special education student population. It's been flat, slightly increasing. We've not seen the declines in our special ed population. More kids are being classified as a percentage of our population than ever before. But the district has increased the number of special education teachers by twenty-one positions and the number of teaching assistants by twenty-seven over the last four years. And that's an increase of twenty-nine and thirty, respectively. So in order to improve the economic efficiency of delivering special education services while meeting the needs of the students as documented in their IEPs, the following reductions are proposed, ten teaching assistant positions. Again, all of those will be, will be covered by retirement. And then we're going to have four consultant teacher direct, those are the specialized teachers that worked in that model. Four of those are being proposed to be reduced as well. As you know, we have a very successful PAR panel made up of consultant teachers. And that's our peer assistance review process. And the district has done an outstanding job supporting our new teachers during their first years with the district, leading up to the granting of tenure. But due to the decline in hiring that we're seeing and the position eliminations, the caseloads are, have dropped dramatically or will drop dramatically. And as a result of that, this budget considers the reduction of CTs. And we're going to be reducing the, the number of CTs by five. We will still have four CTs. Work with our newest teachers at the end of this process. Onto administration, you'll remember that during the last fiscal crisis, many administrative cuts were made along with cuts to instructional programs. And appropriately, over the last five years, the districts worked incredibly hard to restore instructional programs and positions, including athletics. On the operations side, we've done everything possible not to restore those positions. And because we just felt like we needed to, we need to make sure that we hired back the instructional folks first. And therefore, we still lack a director of security, director of technology, and we don't have a grounds crew leader. Those are just three examples of positions that most, if not all of our peers have. The district administrative ratios, and I've got a chart to talk to you about with this, are less favorable than our peers due to the administrative cuts that were made and not restored. And I want to give you two examples. We, we cut middle school assistant principals in two thousand and ten, eleven, and then again in thirteen, fourteen. I know that we were all excited and the board approved a path director. But that, we're going to delay the hiring, that position's been eliminated in the budget until the district's in a better fiscal position. And we have an IT systems administrator that's going to be retiring during the upcoming school year and that position will be eliminated. This is this chart, I know there's a lot going on here, so just bear with me. The bars represent the enrollment. And here's the scale of enrollment, one to nine thousand students. That, that shows what the bars are. The number of administrators are the dots going across here. So looking at North Syracuse, we have thirty point one administrators for roughly eight thousand three hundred and eighty-three students. Or we have two hundred and seventy-eight point five students for every one administrator. Our next closest district with roughly fourteen hundred plus students less is thirty-nine and a half administrators or less than a hundred students, I'm sorry, a hundred students less per administrator. And so if you look at these ratios comparing the large seven, seven largest districts in central New York, you can see that our administrative ratios are really unfavorable. There, there, we've got significant numbers of students per administrator. One of the things, one of the things that we have constantly talked about, and Dan has constantly talked about it, Chris and Jason and, and our, 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 all of our leaders is the social and emotional well-being of our students. And, and so we've worked hard to increase social, emotional support for students at CNS. This budget contemplates the addition of an assist, administrative assistant for student services. We're providing additional social worker and counselor support for Cicero L. and Allen Road. Those two schools were the only schools that had to share a counselor slash social worker. They had a half-time person and, and that just doesn't really cut it. So we're, each of those buildings is going to have a full-time person. We, I think we shared with the board recently that Jason has been able to identify two psychologist interns that'll work with the district next year at a, you know, very favorable economic situation. It gives us an opportunity to, to get to know some people. It provides us pipelines for folks that potentially we could hire. We currently have two open school psychologist positions. So this is going to help us in that regard. We're going to continue our successful partnerships with Liberty Resources and contact. And we think that all of this bodes well for making the ADAPAP process, you know, function with greater focus. Because our ADAPAP counselors have been wonderful, but they have drawn away from their core work because we just haven't had enough counselor and social worker resources available to our students. And so hopefully this will help in that regard. Career and technical education. We have, we've, we've talked a lot about this. We believe that one of the shining spots here at North Syracuse is the fact that we can offer our high school kids more electives, more opportunities than probably any other school in central New York. And we're going to expand that with a live event production courses that we're going to offer. Those courses, we have a very talented teacher who is going to split his time between the junior high and the high school and, and share some of his expertise in that area. We have some courses under development for new technologies. You may have remembered that we had some drone flight testing done here on our campus. In the drone corridor and we've got another teacher at the high school, very excited about that. And, and we're going to be looking at some of the things we're doing in hopes to give the kids an opportunity to learn a lot about drones. And, and so that's, that's, that's another opportunity. Our career center continue to provide opportunities for students to explore career options. And we're going to continue to foster opportunities through BOCES. Last year, we had forty-seven students earn CTE endorsements on their high school diplomas. So this chart just gives you a sense of a few things that we can't really offer independently. But collaboratively with the other twenty-two districts in our area, we can offer our kids some really neat opportunities that prepare them for careers after they graduate. Proposed additions, I've kind of hit a few of these, so bear with me as I, as I just summarize them for you. The high school administrative team has been stretched. The administrative assistant for student support is going to help provide them with an additional set of hands against the needs of the building. We have two new co-curricular activities that we're going to be introducing. We've got to work with our union on these, you know, these are the concepts and, and we think these are going to be the offering. We want to work with our union leadership on them. But mastermind competition, really good for kids. It's, it really, it, it really sharpens their skills and gives them a new opportunity to compete at a higher level. Unified bowling, that's a continuation. You remember, we talked about unified basketball, another opportunity for our special ed students. We do have, you know, despite declining enrollments elsewhere, we do have a bubble of grade seven. Our population there is increasing and we need to increase by one FTE, grade seven teachers. We continue to have English language learners move into the district and we're adding Gillette Road, a point three FTE to support that population. And I mentioned that, yeah, the school psychologist interns that we're excited about. And you can see that that's quite a value. Those folks will not require any health benefits. It's, it's, it's a great opportunity for us to provide health support to our students. We're adding an RTI ELL coordinator. And that is going to allow us to work in that area, that curriculum area. It's going to be able to support one of our directors that, and that director is going to help us meet some of the challenges in the area of math. And so that's a, that's a very strategic hire. Where we mentioned the Allen Road social worker. We also are going to be in connection with the Bear Road project, moving two hundred and twenty-five kids up to Bear Road. And therefore, we want to make sure we've got enough social worker support. Hire a security guard to that location, a lot of new faces, a lot of new families. It's, it's not the highest population they've had up there. But, but this will allow us with their building configuration, the office across the street or across the hall from the entrance will allow us to be a little more comfortable with security up there. Nurses, regardless of the Bear Road project, the demands placed on our nursing staff increase every year. And they're coming to the point where we're hitting a breaking point and we need additional nurse resources. That in conjunction with the need for, to support the larger population at Lake Shore, we're going to be adding one nurse in the budget. And then a teacher aide, a half a teacher aide. That's about five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars of additions. I think it's about seven point five FTE that are being added there. It really does, it still comes back to the kids. And I, you know, despite the hardship of instructing kids at home, the feedback we're getting from the amazing work our teachers are doing is, is phenomenal. And this is just two examples of people showing their appreciation for their teachers.
Don, I'd like to interject a second because people may be wondering about Bear Road and the project there. So Bear Road was voted on by the community back in December of two thousand and nineteen. So that project was voted on and approved by the community. And the building is in huge disrepair and it's one of our last buildings trying to renovate. And we want to make sure that we continue doing that project. That's why we're relocating students to Lake Shore to, to try to finish out what we started and what the community has voted on as a positive thing to be done.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. We talk about this chart every year and I, you know, we, you're, from time to time, people are concerned about the amount of money that the school district spends. And, and, and to be clear, educating a child is an expensive proposition. But when you compare the spending per pupil at North Syracuse to the other twenty-two components, component districts here in central New York, we're ranked eighteenth in student spending. We're ranked six hundred and thirty-third out of six hundred and seventy-seven districts that reported on, on spending per pupil. So it's, it's hard to argue we spend too much per pupil when, when you look at a chart like this. But, but it's an important point of reference and we just wanted to continue to share that with you. Vehicle bonding, you know, a lot of people would ask, hey, why are we buying buses? Can't we, can't we, you know, cut back on that this year? It's, it's a great question. It's a reasonable question. One of the things that we've really, this has been an amazing program which started long before I got here. Smart people decided, hey, we can't have very many buses over ten years old. Make no bones about it, we have some buses over ten years old. The goal is not to have very many, we want to limit that number. Why do we want to do that? We want to reduce the cost of repairing the fleet. We want to avoid problems associated with rusting frames that prevent the fleet from failing DOT inspection. And because we triple-trip our kids, this is a well-oiled machine. We have to have a safe and reliable fleet. We can't have buses regularly breaking down. And I will tell you, it happens. We do have buses breaking down, but it, but it's, we try to keep that door open. We also have switched our fleet, we think this is more economical, to a gasoline engine fleet. We've, we're transitioning over time. Last year was the first year, we bought buses and we'll, that are gasoline engine buses. We're buying, we'll be buying those again in the two thousand and twenty-one school year. And the, the key to this, the key to this is that we get seventy-eight point five percent aid on the buses we purchase. So we, we would, to leave that money on the table, to not, to not get that aid and to keep our fleet safe and reliable and, and cost-effective, it would just be, it would not be a good move for the district. And that's why we were back again saying we need to invest in our fleet and at least keep it current. And that's what this will, this will take. We're going to buy ten sixty-five passenger buses for our two, forty-two passenger buses to service our special needs population. These are specially configured with, with, you know, wheelchair and hydraulic lifts and air conditioning. We're going to buy six trucks slash vans and a mower. We've got a lot of old equipment and, and in our M and O operation, over fifteen years old. Now let, let me explain why this makes sense. In a time when you're really trying to stretch your human resources. In a time when you're really trying to stretch your human resources, we need to make sure the equipment they have is reliable. We spend an inordinate amount of time servicing broken equipment and downtime where guys can't be mowing lawns. Or we get complaints from the athletics community or the, the, the community in general about the appearance of our lawns. Because our equipment is not as efficient and effective. But a fifteen year old lawn mower doesn't have the deck width, the cut speed and the. And the ground speed to allow us to fully leverage the human resource investment that we've made. Our tow truck is over thirty years old. And so we need a more reliable tow truck. It's, it's, it's to the point candidly where many of our maintenance operations folks are just not comfortable driving it. And so thankfully, we're able to buy these things. These, the tow truck buses and whatnot with that transportation aid and we're able to. You know, do this for two point one million dollars. It's about two dollars and thirty eight. For a hundred thousand dollar house, again, for four star. And what does that translate? It translates into happy kids arriving at school on time. So in summary, I know I've gone long and I've, I've tried to, to, to move quickly, hopefully not too quickly. District remains underfunded with foundation aid. Receiving more than thirteen million dollars less this year than is supposedly required to provide sound basic public aid. The tax levy is at two point five nine percent, which only requires a simple majority, staying within that tax cap. The budget includes revenues and expenses of a hundred and seventy two point five million dollars. An increase of about five point eight million or three point four eight percent. Unfortunately, current state aid increases are insufficient and resulted in expenditure cuts. Goes back to the foundation aid being not increased at all, and it just goes back to the general state condition of the state of New York. The net impact on personnel, three people will be unemployed. And I, we don't take that lightly. That's very, very serious and we feel terrible about it. Three people will be unemployed and seven people will go from full time to part time. Of the seven, three of those will lose health benefits. Despite the proposed cuts, we're confident, we still believe that we're able to provide our students with opportunities and with reasonable class sizes. And we're hopeful that the additional federal aid to New York State will preempt further cuts in expenditures. Kind of end on a negative note, but if we, if we do receive additional cuts. The governor at one time in a press conference said, if I don't get more federal aid, we're going to cut spending by twenty percent. Those are crazy numbers. If we lose one percent of our state aid, that's about seven hundred thousand bucks. Five percent is three point five million. So we're hoping that any reductions, and we, we looked at the whole gambit of one to twenty percent here. We're hoping that any reductions in state aid will be offset by additional federal funding. Another interesting dynamic in our, in our budget this year is that because of COVID nineteen and the social distancing requirements. We will not be able to conduct a normal election. Our election will be conducted via the US mail. And, and that'll, that'll be a budget vote and election. And those ballots must be received at the district by five PM on June ninth. Qualified voters are going to get in the mail, they'll, they'll start to be mailed next week ballots with return postage paid. So they just have to vote and put it, you know, and so put it back in the postage paid envelope and get it back to us by five PM on June ninth. Any ballots that are not properly filled out or not, not received by five PM will not be counted. And, you know, there, there's been provisions made so the board members can run. And candidates will be listed on the ballots alphabetically, unlike the days when we would, you know, pull them out of the hat. And we're going to have candidate profiles online only in the interest of getting our district dispatch out and, and keeping the cost of that down. We're going to, and giving the candidates time to put their profiles together. We'll have those online. The, the budget addition of the dispatch will be finished this week and mailed this Friday. I'm sorry, and, and put online this Friday, the fifteenth, and mailed to homes after production of it. We'll go through the printing process on May twenty second. We will have a public hearing on the twenty sixth at six PM and it's going to take place remotely via Zoom.
I have a couple of questions and I, Don, I don't know if you can answer them or our district clerk. About how many thousand ballots are going to be mailed?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand. And any idea? What disappoints me is that we have to pay the cost of this as a district. Any idea what the cost would be? By either one of you for these forty thousand ballots and return postage? Any idea?
Well, what we did is Karen Becker, our purchasing officer, went and got us a business reply permit. So we only pay postage on the ballots that are returned. The ballots that are going out are going to be sixty five cents a piece.
Okay, Connie, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Yep.
What it is, it is, you know, a huge effort for Connie. She'll have to assemble a team of people to put all these ballots together and to get them all mailed out. And, and you're right, printing costs and mailing costs, this is, it's a really extraordinary that, that, that we're conducting the election this way. But I think, I think it'll work for the taxpayers and I think, I think it'll be very clear to them, both in terms of the information provided. And, and the prepaid postage coming back. Let's talk about fund balance because this is, this is a big, a, a, a big consideration as we go through the budgets. One thing that, that happened this year, and I've had this question several times, how much money did we save by closing school? We, we sent kids home on March sixteenth and they haven't been back. We've incurred vast majority of our normal costs because school operates. I mean, we have our, our M and O folks here working. We've got our, our, our bus mechanics working. We've got teachers working diligently. We've got IT folks and teaching assistants and administrators, you know, this, this machine is moving forward just in a different way. However, there were a number of ancillary expenses that we have seen a drop off in. And we're estimating that we're going to save about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. As a result of shut. And we've incorporated that into our fund balance calculation. So let me remind you some things that are happening. So we started the year, we ended last year with eight point nine million dollars in fund balance. We had two point two million dollars, the refund from the final cost report situation that came back in. That was in that eight point nine million. We're going to use that and appropriate that appropriated that for the Bear Road project. Our revenues were a little lower than we expected this year. Our expenses a little lower as well and that's positive. We end up with a fund balance at the end of this year, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty of about six point nine million dollars. That represents about four percent of the projected budget for next year. We're appropriating four million of that to, to get us over the hump next year. And hopefully we'll have some favorable variances that'll mitigate some of that usage. But we just wanted to make sure everybody knew that we're, we have six point nine million dollars we're appropriating for that. On the reserve side, not much changes in our reserves, honestly. We've just got a new workforce compensation administrator working with us. And so there'll be some fluctuation in those reserves over the next year as that situation stabilizes. We are using, as I mentioned earlier, a million dollars of our general reserve. And, and that's been reduced here because we will appropriate that at the end of the year. So it won't be in our balance as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. So our reserves are going from about nine point six million down to about six point seven million. Finally, again, we just can't appreciate, I can't show our appreciation enough for how this organization, the North Syracuse Central School District. Has shifted the way we operate, whether it be business people, administrators, teachers of course, and teaching assistants. And drivers and attendants and food service workers, people have done an amazing job to, to, to continue to achieve the mission. And we're so appreciative and obviously these kids love their teachers, even, even working with them online. And, and I want to leave you with another student, a piece of art that a student did that probably is the right way to end this presentation. So with that, any, any questions or comments?
I have one.
Sure.
My question simply is this, in uncharted waters that we're in, what are we, is just going to be the first round or we're going to have several rounds of this, do you think? Of the cutting?
And Dan, I don't know if you want to comment.
I'll comment because Don was just going to say, we are still unclear on what the governor could possibly do. They are desperately looking for some additional help from the federal government. Because New York, unlike many other of the states, has gotten hit the hardest clearly with this pandemic. So what the governor has alluded to at different times is that there could be quarterly adjustments. We don't know from July to end of September or end of October, we could get a certain amount of money. If he chooses to make an adjustment after that for the, the second quarter of the year. That could have an impact. What we're hoping on is as things are reopening and the economy starts to re-energize itself. We slowly start to bounce back. So that doesn't need to happen, but that is clearly still up in the air.
That's my concern is the second quarter because traditionally it's the one that's slowest when we look at the, you know, the economic cycle. So. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I, I have one just real quick here. We're doing a lot of these reductions with consultant teachers and teachers on special assignment back into the classroom. What is that doing with our long term subs that are in that, in filling in for those teachers? Are they just not being reassigned next year to fill in?
Jason, do you have a handle on that?
And so you're, you're correct with the regard to the consultant teachers, there will be five less long term subs. That spots that will be available. But just rest assured, most of those folks are in positions like elementary where we had some reductions. We had enough long term subpositions available across the district for a multitude of reasons. That we will be able to provide employment for the elementary teachers who have been reduced out of positions for next year. So yes, there is a reduction of five long term subpositions due to the reductions in CT. But there, we will not shorten up the opportunities for those folks. As for the coaches, those coaches actually resigned their positions to take the coaching positions. Their return to the classroom did in fact have, have some impact on the number of available probationary positions. And did result in, in a portion of the layoffs that you saw on the presentation tonight.
Any further questions?
I have a question for Don. Regarding the bus proposal, are all of the vehicles that are on the proposal? For this year, are they all eligible for the seventy eight percent aid?
No, that's a great, great, great point, Mary. So the ten buses, the two forty two passenger buses and the, and the tow truck. The M and O vehicles here are not eligible for that aid, but they're financed at almost zero interest cost. So the alternative is, you know, one of the things we have a such a low cost of capital because of our credit rating and because it's public sector debt. That we can finance those at a very low rate by doing them as part of our vehicle proposition as opposed to leasing them. Which we would pay a private leasing company a, a, a higher rate on those. And, and the other thing I'll tell you is that those are all being bought on state contract pricing. So they're, they're well negotiated.
Great. So I have another question about our fund balance. So you're, we're on, looking at taking four million from our current fund balance. So where will that leave us as far as borrowing, borrowing power? For when we have to do the Bear Road construction project borrowing?
Are you thinking about our, our? Are you thinking about our credit rating?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we have, have meetings with the rating agencies and we talk to them and about our rating and we share information with them. And I don't anticipate at this time a drop in the district's credit, credit rating. I think our, certainly at this stage of the game, we got a four percent fund balance. It's the maximum amount you can keep under the, under the law. So I think, I think we're going to be okay now. It's really going to determine what happens with New York State in the twenty one, twenty two school year. And how successful we are in managing this hundred and seventy two million dollar budget. One thing that I know the board is aware of is that we, we appropriate fund balance every year. We don't always use the money we appropriate. We, we have favorable variances along the way. This year, we talked about the seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar favorable variance due to the shutdown. So we can only hope that we'll have favorable variances in the future that'll soften the, or reduce the use of fund balance. And we can hope that New York State will do a better job of giving us state aid next year.
Do we have any idea what number we should not go under to affect our credit rating?
Honestly, I don't think it's as black and white as that. So I, I don't know, I don't know that number because remember the one thing that we're, that we haven't had. We have not been a district under fiscal stress and, and I think that, that says a lot. The controller's office looks at that closely and, and we, we were there when I first got here and we haven't been back in many years. So I'm hopeful that we don't go back there. So I think if we go back to being a district in fiscal stress, then you start to look at, will that negatively impact our? Our credit rating and you'd have to have a very low fund balance to, to, to get to that point. Or another major financial consideration.
So can, can we see the pie chart for the revenues again?
Sure. Ninety five, ninety, just a little less than ninety five percent of our revenue of these two items.
Yeah, we focus. Right, we focus on the tax levy and the state aid. So what about the other sources of revenue? Is, are we maximizing in our efforts to, you know, get revenue everywhere we can?
We think we are. We're doing, we're just so happy with the, the, the work that our special ed department. Our, our service providers, OTPT speech and the folks at BOSI's are doing to maximize our Medicaid revenue. We have seen that number come up consistently every year and we increased the budget for it dramatically this year. We're doing that. NY class investing, which we, the board approved, are using our investment policy. And that's really helped us maximize our interest income. And we, we're showing a fairly substantial increase in interest income despite declining rates. Where we're able to get money working more effectively than we ever have been before. Sales tax, who knows what's going to happen with the economy. I, I, we're hoping that there's some pent up demand and that people get back out and, and start buying stuff. And that the sales tax revenues hold up. Pilots, what they are, those agreements are in place and, and we work with our attorneys to confirm that that's the correct amount. So yes, we, we kind of beat the bushes here to get as much out of the revenues as we possibly could.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I ask a question. So speaking about revenues, if we don't get, we're supposed to get from the federal government. What are we going to do to raise money? Are we going to raise the, the tax gap? You know, on and off the counties broke. So I'm just trying to ask him, do we have a plan in motion that we're going to do something to raise this money?
I think, I think, I think revenues are tough, revenues are tough. We can't really control, you know, we can lobby aggressively for increases in state aid. We can do everything possible to maximize, as I've talked about, interest and Medicaid and those type of things. Making sure we're, we're, we're billing for the things we're entitled for and we're being wise stewards of, of any cash we have on hand. So it gets invested for interest. I think, I think our first reaction will be looking at expenditures again in the short term. We can't, you know, this levy is going to be done. So if something happens in the first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, our tax revenues from New York State. The only recourse we're going to have is to roll up our sleeves and take a good hard look at our expenses. And if we don't get federal money to offset the state cuts, we're going to have to make other further deeper expenditure cuts.
At some point you can't cut anymore, so.
Oh, we know that.
For years and years, we've been asking about fiscal equity and what are the answers we're getting? I mean, we need answers and we need this to be resolved. We've had enough. We need to push that further. We need to push that further.
All right, Don, uh Don. Can I uh jump in here? Kind of an off. Uh, that's not really off topic, but has the state even hinted about what the normal school year is going to look like in the fall? And have they even hinted about what kind of expenses it might entail to get a normal school year going again and where some of that money might be coming from?
I've got to defer to Z and Chris maybe could help uh.
So Matt, uh to answer your question, they have not talked about what uh the upcoming school year will look like. Um, we as superintendents have been meeting weekly uh on Wednesdays, having discussions uh also with the interim BOSI superintendent uh getting guidance from state ed. Um, they talked about briefly a re-entry, that districts need to come up with re-entry plans. Uh, in doing that, um, uh, we're asking for what are the parameters in developing those plans? So we have uh this uh developed some committees and we're going to be starting that work. But uh we would like to know the parameters in regard to social distancing and uh what that could actually look like. So when Don mentions that we triple-trip, um, so just kids on a bus and social distancing is uh makes it a very difficult. So um as we ask for more guidance in the parameters, formulate plans, but the superintendents are meeting on those uh issues uh usually weekly.
I think, I mean, I didn't think there was a whole lot of progress down there, but I was just kind of poking the bear a little bit here because it's if if, you know, if they put some stringent things in there, it's going to put a big monkey wrench in the budget.
Yeah.
At least I would think.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Don. Don, what what is this process going to look like if the governor does cut funding mid-year?
Well, one of the things, one of the things that we've worked on with our budget subcommittee and Dan, Dan can talk about this, is just identifying, uh, you know, what other areas uh can we can we cut? What can we look at? And uh, you know, we're we're just going to have to take one day at a time here and and uh and see how the year starts out. Um, and uh and and keep on our radar that we may have to look for additional cuts. Um, and we hope we don't have to. I mean, obviously, if there are additional cuts from New York, we hope that they're covered by additional federal funding. Um, Dan, I don't know if I like.
No, you you've answered a little bit of that. The other thing that's happening behind the scenes is uh beyond our state, we have uh Congressman Katko. Um, we've had Senator May and different people lobbying on the state level because any federal monies that is uh looking to be geared toward states, uh, we're looking to kind of earmark that they're allocated specifically for education, at least some of that money. The concern is if the federal government uh provides money to states that are not a certain percentage earmarked for education, it could go elsewhere uh per the governor's purview.
So uh ju- just to react to a couple of things and I and I won't prolong this, but yeah, I've uh participated in a couple of webinars with the New York State School Boards. And I'm participating in the forum. Um, they have a president's forum, a president's board where you've chat back and forth. And basically what you're hearing here is what's going on everywhere and every time it comes down to the federal government and, you know, Mary mentioned the states. I could go on about that because I'm fed up with the discussion of fiscal equity that that has never come to be. Uh, the governor has washed his hands of that because that was adopted uh by two governors ago and they never fully funded it. When you really need to hammer on that, but moving forward, the only the only thing we have is hope from the federal government and the only place we have to go, in my opinion, is uh Congressman Katko. We we have support with the two senators in the state of New York, but uh they're in the minority party in the Senate. And unfortunately, a- and and this is what turns my stomach, uh and I follow the national news every morning is that this is just getting mired in the by in the partisan politics in this country and it'd be criminal for us to suffer for what's going that for that dysfunction and I just hope to God that that doesn't happen, but govern- uh Congressman Katko pushing to get bailouts for basically for for teachers, first responders, healthcare is what every state needs and especially as you heard so several people say, New York, because we've been hit so hard. Yeah, I think this is a very responsible budget. There's a lot of hard work put into this and I do appreciate that. I just don't even want to think about going into any other phases if funding doesn't come through. It's insisted that funding comes through. But.
Thank you.
Any, I there's no question there. Sorry, any comments? It's just just disturbing because a lot of hard work, we've preserved programs and we really need to move forward and hopefully not take any more steps back. Um, thank you, Dan, Don, Jason and Chris. No other comments. I will move to Board of Education Committee reports. I will defer to Mrs. Scanlon for Policy Committee report.
Okay. Um, we our policy committee, we met uh last Thursday on May seventh. Uh, we reviewed ten policies and all ten are on tonight's board agenda. Um, two are readopt without change and eight are amend and readopt. In our next meeting, it's June eighth.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh the uh Mr. Crabtree, the Legislative Committee.
All right, we're going to meet uh next Wednesday, May twentieth, and thank goodness for County Gibson um in doing Zoom because I wouldn't even know how to start. Uh, we're going to be meet at five o'clock. We obviously have a lot to talk to, uh a lot to talk about um with Mr. Katko and um and today the agenda was set out, so um that's uh next week.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Mr. Bowles, Superintendent's comments.
Um, I want to thank all the schools for the great things that they're doing with students, uh encouraging positive interactions and connections. We need to make sure that we are connecting with our kids and the kids connecting with each other. Um, that's what uh makes us a a a wonderful district and so uh we're seeing lots of evidence of that in the images and the pictures that are shared, so I just want to say that's a wonderful work and to keep it going. The signs that were put on the lawns for seniors uh was probably one of the most impressive things that I've seen um uh for the district and for those seniors in the community. It really uh made things mean meaningful for families and the students given this situation. So I I do want to credit uh the the high school, the teachers, the drivers, the the food service, everybody involved because um you couldn't have made a a a an issue uh more positive for the students that are going through that, those seniors. So again, I want to thank people for that. And again, just a reminder, moving forward, that uh we are moving forward uh with the Bear Road Project and we want to continue to support uh all that happens there because uh the schools are our community for our students and our and our teachers and we want to make that into um a happy, friendly, welcoming place uh to continue with the education. And uh that is all the comments that I have, Mr. Puff Valley.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the any other Board of Education members?
I have some questions and Mr. Bowles just uh touched on it, and that's the Bear Road renovation project. Whereabouts are we in the process?
So uh what's happening and Don, please chime in. Um, because uh we need to, we were able to get a a little bit of a leg up on that. And uh we're having uh people remove items from the building so that we could start up as early as uh uh believe this Friday or Saturday in trying to do some some pre-work and get things done and that could gain us maybe about uh five to six weeks within the project, which is something that we did not anticipate before.
That's awesome because there are a lot of people, construction workers. Um, another school district has got triple people working. They are really moving quickly because uh they're doing social distancing and um they're getting a lot done. So as soon as I'm glad to hear that we might be doing it sooner than later because, you know, there are people there looking for work and this is a good way to of doing it. Um, the other thing is um I just don't have a handle, Dan, uh Chris, on what happens every day in school. So I I walk every morning and um I see the food service people out there and the bus drivers and the aides and so forth. And um God bless the principal. She's she's acting, but she's there Monday through Thursday. And I see some custodians there. And then Thursday, you close the schools. I'm correct, right? And that's when they have done all this uh work. So what abouts is happening? Can you, you know, fill us in a little bit about what happens in the buildings during the week?
Well, I'm gonna I'm gonna let Chris talk about instructions. In the buildings, our 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 teachers are not in the building and I want to clarify um so people can hear, we are not closed. There is so much work that's happening instructionally while that our staff and our teachers are doing and our our um OTs, our PTs, our uh special ed teachers. So um I want to make sure there is so much work going on uh day to day. So um our buildings, the brick and mortar, uh we're not accessing them uh with students and our staff. Our custodians are are feverishly uh working in the buildings to make sure that things are sanitized and cleaned and getting caught up on things that we may have done uh later on in moving into the summer. Uh, so those things are are being done, but uh if you ask about instruction, I'm going to let Chris answer um that piece as far as some of the day-to-day things that occur.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question, Bob. So there's two kind of ways of looking at this. There's our synchronous instruction where things are happening where people are doing, our teachers are working directly with kids in small groups doing Zoom meetings. Some of those meetings are one, two, three, or four students. Some of them are whole class meetings. Um, those are happening throughout the week. And there's also asynchronous instruction where teachers are posting assignments in Google Classroom. Students are responding to those assignments or working through activities or tasks, um and then teachers giving feedback. Right now, our goal is to give kids feedback and make sure they understand where they are, where prioritized standards. And we want to make sure that our instruction is very streamlined, so we're hitting the standards we need to hit at this point of the school year. And then we're giving kids feedback so they can continue the learning process um as the year progresses. Um, all of our teachers are required one hour a day to have office hours. Where if parents have questions, kids have questions, they can reach out to them and give them one-to-one, um talk with them either by phone, email, set up their own individual Zoom conferences. Um, I know that there's lots of our teachers who have done quite a bit, reached out to kids and say, hey, I understand this is a complicated art project. Let's uh set set up a Zoom conference between mom, dad and the child and let me walk you through it. Um, we're at a point now where we're getting close to the thirty-five week period. Um, that ends on Friday. And then we'll be looking at the last five weeks of school starting Monday. Um, so there's a lot of conversation about that and and what I would say is what's what's really important and interesting, a lot of the feedback we get is there's a lot of dialogue, there's a lot of exchange. Um, we're looking at this in the elementary levels. It might look a little different than the secondary levels where teachers have a, you know, five classes, maybe two or three different sections of courses, under thirty-five students, you would see probably more of the asynchronous instruction where kids are kind of self-guiding and being independent as they work through the curriculum. Um, in the elementary and middle school, you would see more of the synchronous where teachers are pulling kids together um for kind of one-to-one face time or group time and then giving assignments and then checking back with kids. Um, but as a parent of three children in the district, um I probably got seven or eight emails today, reminders the assignments for the week. And one of the things our teachers have done a really nice job with is saying, okay, let's lay those agendas out on Monday. So kids and families can work through those agendas as the week progresses. Um, and and it's been it's been really good. We started out a little bit on the, you know, with with things moving in a couple of different directions and I think it's tightened up and people have kind of hit their stride. Um, and and I will say um our our tech coaches have been instrumental in supporting, you know, a an organization this large in going from delivering instruction in person to online. Um, I know our Google Classroom numbers have gone up into hundreds, if not thousands, in the amount of class classes that have been created over the last five weeks. Um, we've done a really, really nice job. Um, and I think we've learned a lot of things along the way about what can be accomplished with distance learning, but as we've all seen the news and and the in the reactions to Governor Cuomo's remarks, it this is not a substitute for being in person, sitting around a table, having face-to-face, saying good morning to each other. Um, this is not the goal. This is a vehicle. It's a temporary thing. Will there be some use as we move forward? Sure, but nothing is a substitute for face-to-face interactions. Um, teachers with kids in front of them, um doing what we do best. Um, but at the same time, I think we're moving forward um and and we're working through some of the challenges we go. And I would say the challenges, there seems less of them each day. So great question, Bob, and I appreciate that question.
And uh the awesome answer, because I didn't have a good feel on it. AP courses now, regions were canceled and so forth. I don't believe AP uh were canceled. They've been reduced. Did that that started this week. Am I correct or not?
Yep, they're working through that at the high school and that's a different kind of an exam. It's shortened. It's an abbreviated. Um, but one of the interesting things you pull up too is we still have quite a few kids taking college courses. Um, you know, one of the reasons why it's a school of distinction. So our teachers are doing kind of two bookkeeping. One is what the college requires. Most colleges are fine with a pass/fail. Some are still asking for numerical grades, so those teachers are kind of keeping two sets of books. One for a model that we're using within the district, another for what, you know, let's say Syracuse University or OCC requires. But even a lot of the local colleges are are offering kids the option of taking a pass/fail, acknowledging the challenges and that we didn't have a whole lot of time to get this off the ground.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to routine action items. If I could get a motion to bring A before us approving the minutes of the meeting of April twentieth. Motion made by Terry, seconded by Mary. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none. Could we do a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Yonset? Thank you.
Paul Farfalia.
Hi.
Michael Marizio.
Hi.
Robert Crabtree.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Hi.
Matthew Herman.
Hi.
Terry Kruger. Terry.
You have to unmute, sorry.
I have to unmute myself. Hi.
Erin McDonald.
Hi.
Mary Scanlon.
Hi.
And Mark Thorne.
Hi.
Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you. I'd like to group the B and C together if I get a motion to group items B and C. Motion from Mr. Marizio, seconded by Mr. Harrington. Is there any discussion? B is the classification of school placement of disabled students by the CSE. And C is the classification of preschool disabled students by the District Committee on Preschool Special Ed. Seeing no discussion, Mrs. Gibson.
Paul Farfalia.
Hi.
Michael Marizio.
Hi.
Robert Crabtree.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Hi.
Matthew Herman.
Hi.
Terry Kruger.
Hi.
Erin McDonald.
Hi.
Mary Scanlon.
Hi.
Mark Thorne.
Hi.
Okay, that is carried unanimously. Item D, acknowledgement of business office reports for March twenty twenty. If I get a motion to place that before us. Motion made by Mrs. Mc- Miss McDonald, seconded by Miss Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none.
Yes.
Paul Farfalia, oops.
Hi. Hi.
Michael Marizio.
Hi.
Robert Crabtree.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Hi.
Matthew Herman.
Hi.
Terry Kruger.
Hi.
Erin McDonald.
Hi.
Mary Scanlon.
Hi.
Mark Thorne.
Hi.
Okay, that is carried unanimously. E, if I get a motion for the consideration of the contract award, motion made by Miss Scanlon, seconded by Miss Kruger. That is before us. This is uh dealing with the roofing, I believe, when I read it last at Bear Road Elementary. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Gibson.
Paul Farfalia.
Hi.
Mike Marizio.
Hi.
Robert Crabtree.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Hi.
Matthew Herman.
Hi.
Terry Kruger.
Hi.
Erin McDonald.
Hi.
Mary Scanlon.
Hi.
Mark Thorne.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. That's carried unanimously. Discussion action items. We have the formal adoption of the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school district budget. If I get a motion to place that before us. Motion from Mr. Crabtree, seconded by Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? I I think we've had a thorough review of that today. Um, and as we go forward, I think um, you know, what stands out to me that we've seen several times are Mr. Keegan's graphs, especially with regards to the combined wealth ratio and the uh foundation formula percentage that we're receiving. I think that's important information as we go forward to hammer on that equity piece from the state funding. Any other comments before our vote? Any other comments before our vote? Okay, Mrs. Gibson.
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Erin McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimously carried. Thank you. And now we have item B, the nomination of the NISBA Area Four Director. If I get a motion for that, motion by Mr. Marizio, seconded by Ms. Kruger. Okay, this is Sandra Ruffo, who's been our Area Four Director for NISBA. She's also a Vice President at NISBA. It's my understanding, running unopposed. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Gibson?
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Erin McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Hey, that is carried unanimously, thank you. Need a motion for item C, acknowledgement of the 2021 payroll schedule. Motion made by Ms. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Harrington. Any discussion? Seeing none, yes, Mrs. Gibson?
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Erin McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Thank you, that is carried unanimously. And if I could get a motion, I'd like to group policies E through M together. So if I get a motion to do that, motion for Ms. Scanlon, seconded by Ms. Kruger.
Paul, you skipped surplus.
E.
Oh my.
Skip D.
Oh no, it's right here on my li- okay, I'm sorry. Could I get a motion to the surplus of the marketable and non-marketable goods? We had some rolling computer desks in there. See that I read it, but I missed it. I get a motion for that. Motion for Ms. Kruger, seconded by Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, thank you, Mrs. Gibson, I will go aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Erin McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
And Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Hey, that is carried unanimously. If I could get a motion for policies E through M as a group, if we could put that motion forward, motion to Scanlon, seconded by Ms. Kruger. Okay, we have E through M policies before us, Ms. Scanlon reported those in the board committee reports. Does anybody have a question or need one of them pulled out before we go forward? Okay, we do not see anyone, so Mrs. Gibson?
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Erin McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
And Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Thank you, that is carried unanimously. I have a recognition of four retirees from the district. We have Kevin Lee, social studies teacher with 16 years of service, retiring. Mark Wagner, a technology teacher, retiring with 30 years of service. Michael Piolo, bus driver, retiring with 24 years of service. And Mary Beth Slocombe, teacher aide, retires with 20.8 years of service. So thank you to those for their service and good luck in retirement. It's a pretty good thing, I can tell you that. Moving on to personnel report A, instructional report. If I get a motion to place that before us, motion from Ms. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Marizio. Any discussion on instructional personnel report A? Seeing none, then Mrs. Gibson?
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
No.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Erin McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
Mark Thorne.
Aye.